Good evening and thank you for joining us for the special Select Board meeting for November 26th. We'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone for pulling together this special meeting. There's some change orders and for DPW we wanted and also the Adult Center wanted to keep the projects moving and they weren't ready last week so we slipped one in just before the holidays. So, thank you for everyone coming and thank you for the Building Committee for meeting at such short notice and getting the work done. Do you want to tell us a little bit about, we'll start with the DPW change orders. There are two of them.
Correct. So, we have two PCOs that we just recently discussed with the Building Committee. That's PCO 54 and PCO 55. This is to bury a stockpile of material that we have that has contaminated ACM in the stockpiles. So, this material was discovered while they were excavating for foundations. They were stockpiling the material that were taken out as they're putting in foundations. Again, similar to what we found in the past after we had some rain. Inside the stockpile, it was discovered that there were some pieces of this contaminated material. DEP came out, they looked at it, deemed the pile to be contaminated soil. And so, we went through them with some different options that we could do and one was the option of kind of what we did previously is back in the back of the site by the bio-retention basin is to bury this material, put a demarcation fabric and identify it on a plan saying that this area is, you know, contains contaminated soil. So, that's one of the options that we received to do that. The other option that we asked for and again was approved by DEP was to take this material and bury it under what's going to be the new parking lot. And so, if we buried it under this parking lot, again, this would be in accordance with DEP. It would be identified, the sections that this area is in. And so, we asked for that pricing as well. So, in front of you, I believe you guys received PCO 54. This is to bury the stockpile in the back by the bio-retention area, similar location to where we have an existing pile that is buried. So, this estimate came in from WJ Monford at $105,398. So, Mike and I, we received this estimate yesterday. And so, between yesterday and today, we have been doing a lot of phone calls, talking with different site contractors. And what it boils down to is that we would, we feel very uncomfortable with this price. This is a very high price for, to move 3,000 cubic yards of material. It's not a lot of material to move and you're moving it within the same site. So...
Let's pause a minute. So, the, the change orders you just sent to us were for the Adult Center. So, the one that we received in our original packet are still the ones that you're talking about now. There's not two sets out there?
Yeah, in our regular, yeah, just before.
Okay. All right. So, it's the original packet?
Yes. PCO 54 is what you should be looking at. Yep.
All right. Go ahead.
Nope. That's okay. So, yeah. So, this material, so after our phone calls with different site contractors, I actually went to another site today and actually physically talked to another site contractor. What it boils down to is Salt Marsh's work is a little bit separate than what Compass would be doing. Compass would be doing the wash down, the monitoring of moving this material, setting up a decon station, all that type of activity. They would be the ones that are suited up and in this area. So, we, at this point, we don't really have too much of an issue with their scope of work. But when it comes to the Salt Marsh's work, we do have a pretty big issue as far as the dollar value per cubic yard to move this material. So, what Salt Marsh is doing, they, they have about $22 if I'm right with that material.
It's around $22 per cubic yard if you look at a unit cost, if you break it down to the unit cost.
Right. To move this material. And after our investigation, say, we went through and of the three contractors that we talked to, it should be somewhere and they all came back roughly the same price between $4 and $5 a cubic yard to move this material. So, it's quite a big difference, you know, five times as much as what Salt Marsh is proposing. So, Salt Marsh is roughly their total cost to move that material outside of demarcation and outside of Compass's cost is around $65,000, $67,000. You know, we feel that is excessive to move 3,000 cubic yards. It's two days' worth of work to be charging over $70,000 worth of, of work. So, as we explained to the Building Committee, we would recommend to reject this PCO and try and go with another subcontractor for this work. The town will directly with a contractor to come in and do this work. With that being said, I know there's questions about schedule. So, schedule-wise, this material is out of the way. This material is in the location of where the new salt shed is going to be going. And right now, the salt shed, the material is not on-site for the salt shed. They're not planning on doing it this winter. They're not planning on starting the salt shed until next spring. I know there was some talk way back when about trying to get it up and ready, but just with the delays, it just wouldn't work out and the site's not even ready to receive trucks to come on from the town. So, again, it's, it's not a schedule impact at this point. That material can sit there for the next few weeks, you know, a couple of months, just try and figure this whole thing out with another contractor coming in to do this work. So, that's kind of where we stand with that PCO. Mike, if you want to add anything? I don't know if there's anything I missed or...
No. And the only other thing I want to say is, is, so we use just that general rule of thumb. I talked with two contractors, Adam talked with two contractors. They're all about that same. And given the site constraints, yeah, that dollar value could be a higher unit cost, but it doesn't justify four to five times as much, plain and simple. So...
Any questions, Mark?
Any idea why it's so high? It seems like...
No. No. And again, the contractor, when I asked the contractor that, if he, you know, saying this just doesn't add up, can you take a look at it, revisit it? He said, you know, the cost of the costs and there are some site constraints that I, I just alluded to that are, are going to increase the price. Those site constraints being, the site is closing in on them right now. So, they have to, they can't just take that material. So, they're going to dig a hole basically. They can't just take that excavate and just put it right there behind, beside the hole. They have to probably move that, that material to the other end of the site on a temporary basis and then move it back. So...
You're almost swapping materials. So, you have the stockpile, you're going to dig the volume of the stockpile and swap them out.
And you've got winter conditions coming up too. That's going to increase costs. But again, I, I just don't think it justifies the four to five times as much.
Right. And based off my conversations with just another site contractor today, you know, this price to me seems very excessive.
Mark?
I have two questions. The first one is, I'm, so I opened up this PC 54, oh 54.
Yep.
And, and I see the Salt Marsh bid for $64,494. I see the Compass bid for $13,222. I, I guess I'm not understanding where the Monford's bid for $105,398 is and how we could have seen that from this document that, that we were supplied.
So, I will answer that question for you. So, there was an updated version that came through. I'm not sure Lynn, if you actually received that. So, I apologize. So, what happened was, so they went back, they did not add in their demarcation fabric, which is required by DEP. So, Monford, actually Mike had a comment on, on our comments back to them saying, does this include the demarcation? And just late this evening, they sent this one back saying, no, it doesn't. This is the revised price with it.
Any other question?
Yeah. Yeah. If I could. So, that's fine. I, you know, we're not, we're not going to prove it anyway, but...
Right.
It's pretty problematic when we're not getting the latest thing. But my, my concern is we're going to, you know, the proposal is to bury this under the parking lot. Everything I've seen for the last nine months...
Can I stop you right there?
No.
So, this proposal is not to bury it under, but there's, there's two proposals.
So, this is to, this one's to bury it in the retention?
This one's to bury it in the back by the retention. There's no utilities under there. There's no...
But, but my, my comment will, will stand, which is everything I've seen, is every time we dig a hole on that site, we come up with more asbestos. How do we know that when we dig the hole to bury this on this retention area that we won't?
This area's already been excavated and brought up. So, this area has clean...
But now we're digging, but now we're going to dig down?
Correct. So, am I answering that correctly?
Well, all I want is you know for 100% certainty, there is no asbestos-containing material when we dig this hole to bury this.
Well, I can't answer 100% at any point.
Well, but you said it was excavated already. I mean, that's my question.
So, do you have a site plan to show?
I actually don't have a good site plan to show you, but it's in an area...
Well, no. We, it, there's something in the document we have. There's a site plan in the document I got. It says approximate stockpile burial area and approximate AU L area.
Yeah. So, back in that area, there hasn't been any ACM material identified in, in that area historically?
So, so at this point, we're not doing anything else, waiting for better bids, lower bids, I guess?
So, that's our recommendation is to reject this and, and get another bid.
Well, we don't have to vote on it. We don't have to vote on it.
I, the reason I'm bringing this to your attention, because I know this was brought to us by the contractor initially stating that this material was holding up the job. So, we asked for these bids. And so, subsequently to that, what's happened is this material, burying it under the parking lot was, any, if we were going to put it under the parking lot, that would have caused a potential delay if we didn't get that response right away. Because they needed to bring that area up, they had to start getting ready for underground facilities and that activity. So, right now, they've already started bringing that material up. And again, it's, it's our recommendation, it came from the town as well, that under the parking lot is not the best solution for this. If there was ever an incident, five, 10 years from now, you don't want to be digging through that. Correct. So, I don't even see that proposal even being on the table at this point. But right now...
So, under the parking lot, is that proposal 055?
Correct. So, both of those proposals, we recommend to reject at this point and go to an outside contractor for additional pricing.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How soon are you going to get those other bids?
So, we're going to start right away. I'm going to call Chad tomorrow just to make sure that we do everything properly. And we should, the site contractor I talked to today, he said, if you need to call me, call me. I mean...
I mean, are you going to have them by Monday? Or are you talking the 16th?
It won't be, it won't be. I mean, Thanksgiving is Thursday. There's no way we have something by Monday. But again, this is not a schedule impact to the job. If we had this in a month from now, it would still...
Even with the bad weather coming, can they really start working on digging?
Yeah. I mean, they can, I mean, if we're, yeah. If we were there in the next few weeks, the next month, I think we're still, we're still okay. I mean, today was 67 degrees out. I know that weather can change on a dime. But at the same time, you know, that's something, yes, we will expedite this and try and get a number as soon as possible. I don't want to say we'd have a number Monday because that just, that wouldn't happen.
Well, I'm saying, am I going to set up another special meeting on the 9th or 10th?
No. I would say not at this point.
Or go right to the 16th?
Yeah. I would say not at this point. It would be a couple of weeks out. We would have a better answer for you by the beginning of next week of when that meeting takes place.
So, let's aim that it's going to be on the agenda for the 16th. If it's, you're not going to get it to us by the 12th, I guess that Friday before the 16th is 15th, 14th, 13th. You've got to let me know if it's not going to be in the packet by the 13th.
Okay. We can do that.
So, that will be our, Tom?
Yeah. I mean, it's just frustrating a bit because when I first, when we first were presented with this, I said, well, why don't we just bury it on-site? And they, it acted as if this was pristine, you know, wilderness, that there's, oh, you don't want to bury it on-site because we're going to have other things going up. And, and now we're going to be burying stuff on-site. And I'm wondering if, once it's buried...
Yep.
If, if the DPW wants to put a shed or anything on top of this, is that possible?
So, we've had conversations with DPW and our proposed locations for this. In this area here, you're, you're not going to put a, a structure of any kind. It's too close kind of to the back of the slope. It's over by the detention pond, which is this big pond area for, for stormwater. So, back there, and we spoke tomorrow about this, there really is no way you would even put a structure back there. And the material that you're referring to at the beginning, that we talked about, can we bury this on-site, the amount of that material is 1,000 times larger than what this, this pile is. I mean, if you remember those huge, huge piles, this is a little pile that would fit in this room. I mean, this is...
And how about erosion then? Is this an area, is there going to be anything set up so it wouldn't, is it, do we have to worry about it eroding into that creek or anything?
Mike, what kind of idea is that?
It won't, it won't be mounded up. It's, and they're going to dig down, create a hole, put it in the hole, and then cover it up. So, it won't be mounded up. So, we won't be worried about erosion there.
Okay.
Richard?
Yeah. To, to add a little bit to Tom's request too, they're, they're only talking just a teensy little speck of what was moved down to the other site. That was a mountain of material they moved down. That's why they didn't try to bury it on-site.
Yeah. We talked about that option, but the, the massive hole that you would have to dig on-site to do that was...
We might have got a price on that too.
I think we did actually get a price on that. And the, the price and the, and just the dewatering alone on that project was astronomical.
Okay. Want to move on to the second PCO in DPW?
Yep. So, the second PCO that we have here is PCO 056. This is for the helical piers. And Mike, I'll let you take this one.
So, the old, the old structure, the old tennis courts had a sewage vault that left the building. That vault was, was 20 feet deep, difficult to access. We went and did some soil borings around the perimeter of it. Once we had some concerns about it, we went and did some soil borings around the perimeter of it. And what we found is the soil just was never compacted at all. It was very loose. You know, we, we're doing a hammer test, if you will. And every time you hit the top of the, the rod, the drill rig just went down two feet. So, there, there's no bearing capacity on that soil as it is. So, we have to beef up the soil in that area to support one of the major piers for the, for the building. So, the best option to move forward is, is helical piles, which will go down below the depth of the fill, below the depth of the vault and, and give the, that area and that pier the stability they'll need to support the building.
Quick question. What is the timeline? If we approve it today, this can be done because I understood that is going to stop the project.
Yeah. That, we're at a critical point in the, in the, in the project where, where the building steel's on-site. They're looking to get started next week with, with erecting it. And, and if you haven't seen a pre-engineered metal building go up, it goes up very quickly. Depending on, I, depending on the timeline for approval, depend on when they can get in the queue to do this work. Last, the, the contractor that they talked with, we had spoken with as well. They had a relatively open schedule so they could get to it right away. I, I don't know. Did you hear a date on the stuff?
I didn't get a date as of yet. So, but it, it, it sounds like it would be a quick turnaround to actually get this process going.
Because the steel guy's doing, I thought, tomorrow.
No, it won't be tomorrow. They're not going to start the day before Thanksgiving on steel. The, the steel date is next week.
Next week. And will this be with Thanksgiving? Are we going to have to hold the steel guys out?
No. So, they can start on this. So, they're going to start in the administration area. And then this pier there, or piles work that they have to do is kind of on the opposite side of the building. But yes, it is something that we would want to move along and get it scheduled ASAP, just so when they actually get to that point, we're not at a standstill.
Questions? Richard?
Yeah. Why so late on the discovery?
So, so they were, they were supposed to excavate this, this, this vault. But due to the depth of it, we didn't know the depth going into this project, just because it was locked and we had no access to it. Due to the depth of it, it couldn't be excavated. It, it could not be excavated out. So, they actually used flowable fill and filled that vault. But they didn't call us to witness it. So, we started asking questions. And what we did is we went out and we, we cored the flowable fill, just to verify it was acceptable. And doing so, we also said, well, we should probably check, now that we know the depth of this vault, we should probably check the backfill and make sure that that's acceptable. Because our calculations rely on that. So, we did that while we had the drill rig there.
Mark?
Two questions. The, the document I have in front of me says 636614. Is that the amount?
That's correct.
Okay. Second, the, the second one was, excuse me. That's, that's all I have right now. That's fine.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So, if you want to talk about, if it...
Okay. So, so there's one, there's one thing with that, with that change order that I discussed with the Building Committee earlier is, so going into this process, what we do is we design, we, we do a design. It's based on our engineers. We do a design for that helical, helical pile to sustain the, the bearing pressure of that, that, that pier that will be constructed on top of it. With that, we give a basis for design for the contractor to give a price on. Now, what that contractor is also supposed to do is he's supposed to take his engineer and design it. And with that design, he's going to stamp it. So, he's going to own it at that point. So, he might come up with something different. He might say, these helical piles need to go another three feet. We might need an extra helical pile. So, there, there is a chance that this price could go up a little bit. What I, I told the, the Building Committee earlier, I feel very comfortable that it won't be more than $5,000. Well, actually, I said five to 10, but $5,000 would probably be the number.
Mike, just, where's, where's the, where are these funds coming from? What, what line item do we...
Contingency.
Do we, do we have a contingency that will...
Correct. Yep.
I have a question about the numbers. So, you designed some numbers. Has it really gone to the contractor yet?
It has. It has. It has got some...
And so, they've started to review it? I mean, because I know there was number problems going back and forth for a while. And are they comfortable with those? Or are we still, could they come back to you and say, we're not happy with these numbers?
No. So, so they could come back, because if you, if you read the way the, the subcontract, the subcontract hasn't designed it yet. So, as they, as we approve it, they'll get into the design. And, you know, it's very possible that they, they could come back and say, you know, we, we based our proposal on your design, but however...
And they took some assumptions in providing a price?
And how soon do you think that turnaround's going to be on them coming back to you on numbers?
It, again, it's going to depend on where we are in the queue with the contractor. When we spoke with them about a week and a half ago, they had an opening. Whether or not that opening is still there, I, I can't speak to.
All right. So, you'll keep Lynn informed?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
On where we're going day by day on this.
Correct.
So, what do we do? I'm prepared to potentially vote on 63666. What if it comes in at 69? We have another change order that comes through? Because we're not going to do what we did the last time, which is have them exceed their authority.
Right. So, what we did was with the Building Committee, we recommended a, not to exceed the 63666 and 14 cents. That was our, so if, if it comes in over that, then we come back as a change order to Lynn or to whatever authority it falls under and proceed that way.
But it would, what authority, would that go back to a whole new change order or an addition of 5,000?
I would see it as an addition to this number that's here.
Okay.
This is a $10,000, $8,000, $5,000 to death.
Well, my concern is that we keep going back and forth and we're not getting the work done. And we're coming into winter and our steel guy's going to walk on us if we can't complete the project. So, that's why I'm a little worried about our timelines here.
I didn't mean to cloud the issue. I just wanted to be transparent that, you know, this isn't a be-all. It, we think it is a be-all, end-all, but there is a potential for something to come back. I was just trying to be transparent. I didn't, I didn't mean to cloud the issue.
Does the board feel comfortable with letting Lynn deal with something under 10,000? Or does the board want it to come back to them?
Well, we've already said that the town manager can deal with stuff under $10,000. My concern is that, you know, the, the document here is printed on a paper that says Monford. It's printed on a paper that says Salt Marsh. It's printed on a paper that says Conti, you know. And now they're going to come back saying, but we, but we changed our minds? I mean, come on. They're bidding on that. I consider that a contract, the way it's written. And if we're not, I mean, this, this project, you can tell my frustration, it's just riffed with, with problems. And they, you know, it's, this is, this is literally the Gillette of public works projects that, you know, they give us the blade and they're making their money on the change orders. The change orders have been astronomical, out of order. And to say that they're going to make a change order on a change order because they don't know if they want to live on their, they're not your numbers. They, this, this doesn't say your, your company on it. It says Monford on it. And it says Conti on it and it says Salt Marsh on it.
Okay. Richard?
Yeah. Let me put a little correction. I don't know if we can say astronomical and this, that and the other. Every change order's been brought before. It's been well documented. Most of the change orders, Mark, have been with the asbestos, which we didn't know about and nobody knew about. So, I don't, I don't, the process he's saying is that they're going to, their engineering department, and we have the option to lay it another week if you want, let their engineering department come back with the final. That's the only thing that we can gain on it. If, if we think it's worth five or $6,000, possibility, five, $6,000 change order, then we, we could do that.
No. I guess my only question, Richard, is why didn't we come forward with a, with an estimate that we, we have no confidence in, that we're, that we're saying it could change?
We have a good amount of confidence in this.
Well, but that, but...
The issue is there's a new person in and they will not start doing the design, engineering unless we have the change order. And they were going to not know until they get down into the actual conditions and the deep, how deep they go. And so, it's...
They're just going to redesign it.
I, I get that. They're going to redesign it. Right. It came with a design. It's kind of a, it's somewhere in this neighborhood. We hope we can do it for this amount. But if we can't, we'll come back to you and tell the real amount. You know, we already know the answer, I think, based on their, the past history of, of Monford and these companies. We know the answer's going to be. We always need, they always need more money or want more money. And there's not a darn thing we're going to be able to do about.
Yeah. And Conti...
So, the question is, who's checking their calculation? I mean, we, you did the calculation. Who's checking the calculation?
We, we checked the calculation.
And, and when they come back and say, we need to know, go another two feet deeper. Who checks that we need to go another two feet deeper?
Our engineers will double check that.
And will we, have we ever gone back and said, no, you don't. We want it this deep. We're the architects?
We have definitely made comments on, on assumptions before.
I mean, who's running the show? The architects?
Do you want to accept ownership for it? I mean, that's, that's what they're saying.
No. We're paying the architects and the...
Wait a minute. Remember what he said though? This, this is the engineering estimates that came in. Their engineering department's going to look at it and they're the ones that stamp, stamp this thing and own it for warranty, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's a transfer taking place. And yeah, they may, they may bump the design by 1%. But the, the only option, Mark, is that's not going to change. We can wait another week if you want. But, but this design process is not going to change.
I'm looking for a approval on this tonight because I'm, it's something I think should have been here in front of us a week ago. And that's why I put the emergency meeting because this is going to cause a series trouble when they're starting to lay the, these guys come in to do the steel, they shoot it right across. And right as it is, we're hoping timing, these guys will come in and do what they need to do so we don't get into...
Correct. Yeah. And I agree. This one is, definitely could be a schedule impact as opposed to the other ones that we just spoke about.
So, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve, sorry. Motion to approve $63,000, 66614.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Thank you. The next one is the Adult Center, right? What number?
Well, we don't have any actually change orders for the Adult Center this evening.
Oh, you don't?
Nope.
Oh, I had that down on my agenda. Okay. I guess we just had it as a, so you're done?
So, we're done. That's it. It was really DPW that we wanted to get in here for emergency. And I appreciate your time.
All right. Any, well, we have our wonderful project manager, architect. Any questions? Select Board has. If not, we can all, you always can send them for a meeting tomorrow. Anyone wants to attend. But I understand, and you've gotten hold of everybody to tell them you now changed your location of your meetings, right?
Yes. I sent that email out. So, we'll now meet at the Adult Center site in the job trailer now that we have power.
I don't know if Barry Jarvis was on that list. You might want to check that.
I can check that and say, I know she, yes. I will make sure that she's... Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And keep the accelerator. Let's keep going before the snow hits. I'm so worried about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the Building Committee. All right. So, I'm looking for a motion. First of all, the SOA I had put on there, because I wasn't sure. I kept getting emails that we had to do something imminently. But instead, I got a very nice phone call. I talked to Armin and he said that the things are moving on to the governor's desk and it's all positive for Long Meadow. So, the school committee's very pleased. So, we do not need to do anything on that item.
So, Marie, I, I sent a note to people. The Student Opportunity Act, which the governor has now signed, includes in it a amendment that requires or calls for a study of Proposition 2 and 1/2, the impact of Proposition 2 and 1/2 on communities, having not very much to do with the Student Opportunity Act. It's just a Proposition 2 and 1/2 study.
Well, because it will affect school funding, you know, once this town starts hitting it.
You know, I, I only mentioned that so people can understand that or hear that the discussion then will ensue. And I've provided Senator Lesser with the analysis that I shared with the Select Board of Long Meadow's position on, on Proposition 2 and 1/2 and spending.
But that's just your committees.
What?
That's just committees. That's not, not Select Board.
No, no, no. I, I provide that to the Select Board.
Yeah. But that's a committee. That's not a Select Board.